This is a rebroadcast of the Eau Claire School Board Meeting. The audio for this program can be heard on WRFP LP 101.9 FM.
It's called to order, the Eau Claire School District meeting tonight. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Secretary Iverson, will you comply with the open meetings law notification this evening?
Yes, we have.
Thank you. Could you please do a roll call to verify quorum?
Commissioner Spindler.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Cummins.
Here.
Commissioner Hamburg Boyle.
Here.
Mr. Dux.
Here.
Commissioner Boo, absent. Commissioner Jean.
Here.
Okay, we could have the superintendent's report. Go ahead.
Good evening, everyone, as we do each.
Oh, excuse me, I forgot the public forum. I'm sorry. I was, I forgot someone signed up right, right before we got it. So, um, we, okay, we're thinking about the basketball game tonight, so we're moving. We'll see what happens. Ah, so Megan Snow we have for the public forum. Go ahead. Just state your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Megan Snow, 710 East MacArthur here in Eau Claire. Um, I actually am just sharing just a little bit about South and I was hoping that if my voice were heard, that maybe it might help other parents that are also at South. One great thing is our new principal, Principal Ziegler, she is awesome. So, we, we really like her and I just want to give a shout out for her because she is just perfect. But, a challenge that we have had in our family, and I've noticed it happen to other middle schoolers at South, and I'll follow up by something that happened today, just so you know why I decided, okay, I gotta say something, is there has been kind of a wall or a ceiling preventing some of the kids who are excelling from getting into or obtaining the excelling classes that they are in. At South, there are some roadblocks on their path and sometimes they don't get into those classes that are excelling classes, for whatever reason, a various number of reasons. I don't have a solution. I'm just aware that there's a problem. And, for example, today my son came home with a huge smile and I'm glad because he took the math assessment, which I guess they do, in seventh grade for eighth grade math placement, and the students were told before, this is what I heard, I don't know this verbatim, I wasn't there, the students were told before the test results were handed out that a lot of people, a lot of students did very well. That's a great thing. I love to hear that kind of news. The challenge is, is that they were told that even if you got 90 percent, there may not be room in the algebra class next year. And, as a parent, having had experiences with South, that I saw many roadblocks for excelling students, I just came tonight to tell you that again today, I was very apparent or very in front of me, the roadblocks for our excelling students that prevent them from getting into the classes that they can do well in and then progress. So, I just wanted to make that aware and a personal side note, as I work on the Parent Advisory Council at South, one thing that we're very interested in, we don't know how to accomplish this, but it's something to, I guess, maybe have a conversation about, is that as parents and advocates for our community, we would like to, this is a side note from the other thing, we would like to understand the financial situation of the school district so that we are better aware or more prepared for when we need to reach in, meaning vote, or whatever the case might be, and do our part because we understand some of the situations going on in the state, and so we need better education on that regard. So, those are my two things, and like I said, awesome principle. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And just, you know, first work with the administration, your principal move up about your concerns with, with the first part. And, on the financial, on the financial part, yes, we will try to work on that. Thank you very much. So, that was it for public comments. Superintendent's report, now, go ahead. Sorry.
Okay, thank you. So, let's go over the upcoming Board of Education events. On April 13th, there will be a Parent Advisory Committee meeting here at the Administration Building at 7:00 PM, and at that meeting, Dan Van De Water will be talking to parents about the state of budget. So, that is on our docket for the PAC meeting. April 14th at noon in the Administration Building, there will be a Budget Development Committee meeting, and on April 15th at 4:00 PM, there will be a Demographic Trends Committee meeting here at the Administration Building, and on April 20th, there will be a School Board meeting. We had some news this week. The selection committee for the Herb Cole Educational Foundation Scholarship and Fellowship Program has announced recipients of the 2015 Foundation Awards for Students and Teachers. Each scholar and fellow will receive $3,000 in awards, and each fellow school will also receive $3,000. The Excellence Scholarship recipients demonstrate excellence in the academic arena and high motivation to achieve. They have displayed a broad range of activity and leadership outside the academic setting and have shown strong promise for succeeding in college and beyond. Memorial student Kate Tanna was selected as an Excellent Scholar. The Fellowship recipients are chosen for their superior ability to inspire a love of learning in their students, their ability to motivate others, and their leadership in service within and outside the classroom. This year's recipient is North Star Middle School teacher Sue Devine, who received the Education Foundation Fellowship. And Initiative Scholarship recipients are chosen by their schools, have demonstrated exceptional initiative in the classroom, and have chosen strong promise for succeeding in college and beyond, but have not yet received other academic-based scholarships. Adrienne Booter from McKinley Charter School was selected as an Initiative Scholar. So, we congratulate all of these recipients. And since athletics is a major area of focus for tonight, we have some news on the coaching front. North wrestling coach Mike Pernsteiner was named the Wisconsin Wrestling Coaches Association District Three Coach of the Year. North baseball coach Bob Johnson was named the Wisconsin Baseball Coaches Association Northwest District Coach of the Year. And Norris Women's Basketball Coach Michelle Plinsky was a member of the first all-female duo to do the broadcast of a WIAA State Tournament game. So, congratulations to all. That's it. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So, for my report, I just want to welcome our new Leader Telegram reporter, Elizabeth Doms here. Just remind everyone that we have a new reporter and she's gonna do a great job for us. So, thank you for coming. Just also, March 18th was the Wasby Day at the Capitol, which I attended, and school members from about the state went there. And I do have to report that at least some of the legislators I saw said the governors, the state budget will look much different than the governor's budget, so let's hope so in a positive way. Some of the board members went to the Nasby Convention this past weekend, and if you have any materials from the convention you wish to share to board members, please let me know. That would be great, that you think would be interesting. April, let's see, April 2nd was the Alliance for Strong Communities Forum in, at CBTC, and I think it was a tremendous success. We had a great turnout, the Alliance did, for educating us about our public schools. April 23rd coming up is the Wasby Regional New School Board Member Meeting in Durant, and all school board members are welcome. We all went down one year. It's great to come out and support new board members. And finally, May 2nd is Wasby's 2015 Spring Academy, and there's three tracks for that like normal, so if any board members want to attend that, please let Patty Iverson know, our secretary. So, that's it for my announcements there. Jonah, do you have a report for us tonight? Okay.
So, just a couple of things, so we can, I'll get home to the bachelor game. But, um, well, applying for schools, one thing that was really positive was the addition of online transcripts that were, that were new this year, so that helped everything go a lot quicker. One inhibitor, however, was our district didn't have the option to do online Common Application. So, if you don't know, the Common Application is, is just like the general one for a ton of private schools in the area, and most schools are going to it, and I, I heard there was software to make it all online for Memorial students, was in the works, but by the time my grade did all of that, it was, it was not working. So, just maybe continue to look into that, that would definitely help everyone get through the difficult process more, make it a lot smoother. And then the other thing is the dance policy. This was brought up to, to me by a group of students from Memorial, and their, their biggest problem was the, was the disjoint between the North High School's dance policy and Memorial's dance policy, and North being less strict than Memorial's, considering some of the recent problems we've had at the Memorial dances. So, maybe just have administrators get together and discuss these things and make sure they're on the same page as to how, what the rules are and how they are enforcing the rules. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. All right. Board Committee reports. I think we have only policy and government, so Commissioner Dux.
Yes.
She said you do.
We met this morning at 10:30, and tonight we will be up for a possible first reading on the policy on voting, and I don't remember the number for that, but it's on, it's on the agenda. We also reviewed the policy on student records, and the number for that is 347. We reviewed Policy 230, which is Administrative Organizational Chart. And lastly, we reviewed Policy 225, which is the timeline for the Superintendent Evaluation. So, you'll be hearing about those soon, I'm sure.
Great, thank you. Appreciate that. And I don't think there are any other reports. We can go under it when we do that contract. Legislative update, Commissioner Hamburg Boyle.
Thank you. Not much to report, but just a couple of things to remind people about. The Legislative Fiscal Bureau estimated the effect of the proposed budget on property taxes, and I know many of you have heard this, but I'm just gonna reiterate it again, that according to the Legislative Fiscal Bureau's memo, the proposed budget would decrease property taxes on a medium-value home in the state, $8 in the first year, which is a .3 percent increase, and $3 in the second year. Much of the decrease is due to the proposed budget's freezing of revenue limits on school districts in both years of the proposed budget. What people need to understand is that that's a tax credit to the homeowner, and none of that money comes back to the public schools themselves. So, when you hear about that, that's a piece that, as the mom who came up from South tonight, that's a huge piece for people to know, okay? There is also, school start date legislation has been introduced. It's Assembly Bill 144. Wasby supports this bill, but what the bill is asking is allowing some schools to start before September 1, but only schools that have more than 20 percent participation in the AP exams in the previous school year would be allowed that exemption. So, that was brought up. These are good. Work continues on reshaping a school accountability bill. We are all aware of that. It was proposed, the hearings were, were many hours long. Those were the ones I watched on Wisconsin Eye, and my mom started watching too. And, so, you need to know that there are at least two versions that have been floated back and forth. They're out there now because there was considerable controversy with both accountability bills. So, Wasby's report here said that Assembly Speaker Robin Voss, he's the Republican from the Rochester, offered some comments on school accountability recently. He acknowledges it is taking time to get 132 legislators up to speed on accountability and to put some meat on the bones of an accountability package. I find that positive because they are really looking into what the bill says. Voss suggested that the legislature may have gotten accustomed to having Governor Walker's people put together a package and then working on the details. This time around, however, rather than putting it on a general framework, Governor Walker said in Voss's words, and these are in quotes, "letter grades and that's all. That's not enough for most of us," Voss says. So, that's kind of where that's sitting right now, so I'm not sure how long that'll take to get through. And then one other thing on here that kind of piqued my interest is that the state budget is now in the hands of the Legislature's Joint Finance Committee, which is expected to begin voting on the budget in the second week of April. It's very important to contact your legislators with your concerns and explain how the cuts are affecting your community. When I testified in Rice Lake, there were many people there, but I think they are asking that people continually contact their legislators. So, if you go to Wasby, W A S B dot org, and click on Advocacy and Government Relations, then click on the Legislative Update, you can read more about what I just presented tonight, but you also can get the Assembly Directory and the Senate Directory, and you can connect to your legislator on a one-to-one with an email. And I would suggest that people do that. Okay, and I think that's the end of my update. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, now we have our consent agenda. On the consent agenda, we vote on all of them at once unless a board member wished to poll these, all of these we have seen before or really common items that have happened. So, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of March 16th, 2015.
You poll those.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to approve the Human Resources Employment Report.
Please poll those.
Okay, so, they are now individual resolutions. Commissioner Johnson, you have the first one for the minutes.
I move approval of the minutes.
Oh, you didn't have a question about?
I'm abstaining.
Oh, understand. Do we have a second to approve the minutes?
Second.
So, we have a second. All right. All those in favor, say aye to approve the minutes. Aye. Opposed? Abstained?
Me.
We have one abstention. Okay, second one. Commissioner Dux, you have a question about the employment report?
I don't have a question. I just want to thank all the teachers who are retiring. There are many of them this year, and I just want to thank them for their many years of service.
Agreed. Thank you very much for thinking of that. Do we have a motion to approve the, or do you have another comment?
I had another question.
Oh, go ahead.
I, I was wondering, and I'm just gonna put the question out there, I don't know if it can be answered tonight, but how many retirees do we have total in that?
At this point, we have 27 retirements and six resignations.
Okay, thank you. And the, and the resignations then will be followed up with exit interviews?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I move approval.
Okay, we move, we have one motion for, motion for approval.
Second.
Have a second for approval. Okay. Come on, this is not, we can do a voice vote on this. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Okay, thank you very much. So, next on our individually considered resolutions, we have a proclamation, and this is from the Alliance for Substance Abuse Prevention in Eau Claire County. It's mainly to remind parents about the Who Hosts Lose the Most, their campaign, Talk, They Hear You. It's an alliance of a number of community groups on this, and we have, they asked us to approve a proclamation supporting that campaign. So, I think I entertain two things. One is a motion to approve the proclamation, and I would assume we'd want to read it, and if we have a volunteer who'd want to read it, I would accept that also.
So moved.
So, we have a motion to approve the proclamation. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Dux. Would someone care to read it, or I will? I'd be very happy to if they want me to.
Well, I was gonna volunteer, but it says I, Rich Spindler, so I think.
Yeah, I was afraid you'd notice that. Okay, then I will read it. All right. So, proclamation supporting the 2015 campaign, and the campaign is Talk, They Hear You. Whereas, the Talk, They Hear You campaign is the focus of the 2015 Parents Who Host campaign sponsored by the Alliance for Substance Abuse Prevention, and whereas over 80 percent of young people ages 10 to 18 say their parents are the leading influence on their decision to drink or not drink, and whereas the Alliance works to educate parents and caregivers about the need to talk to their kids about underage drinking, and whereas members of the Parents Connecting Network now represent over 850 Eau Claire County households that have committed not to provide alcohol to anyone under 21 in their home or on their property, and whereas adults who do provide alcohol to those younger than age 21 are placing those younger persons at risk for academic, health, safety, and legal problems, and whereas we know that innocent experimentation has grave consequences because 60 percent of kids who drink alcohol before age 15 eventually go on to try other drugs, and whereas the Eau Claire City/County Law Enforcement Agencies rigorously enforce laws against selling or serving alcohol to underage youth. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Eau Claire Area School District endorses the Talk, They Hear You campaign and encourages parents to, one, talk to their kids about underage drinking, two, use resources from the Alliance for Substance Abuse Prevention found at www.getinvolvedasap.com, the third bullet, get connected with over 850 Parents Connecting Network members, and the fourth bullet, monitor youth gatherings in their home. Now, therefore, I, Rich Spindler, on behalf of the Eau Claire School District hereby proclaim the month of April 2015 to be Talk, They Hear You Month. So, that is the proclamation. We have a motion on the floor. Any comments or discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the proclamation, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, proclamation passes. And I do want to thank the parents, I don't know if any parents are here tonight, but I want to thank the parents who are involved in this. I've been actually on that connecting network myself, so very much appreciate another work on this. Okay, so next on our agenda is a strategic plan proposal, Smart Learning Systems. We've had a number of work sessions on strategic planning, and last time we decided we would, well, we had at least seemed to be a consensus at the work session to move forward with having someone help us with some of the logistics of this, as well as reaching out to the community in various ways on strategic planning. So, we have the proposal before us from strategic planning, I'm sorry, from Smart Learning Systems, and there are various elements in it. So, first, I either could take a motion, put it on the floor, or I could ask any questions or administration, yes?
I move approval.
So, we have a motion from Commissioner Dux to approve the proposal. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second too, from Commissioner Hamburg Boyle on it. Any discussion on this? Questions, comments for administration, anything at all? I don't know if administration, I don't know, Superintendent, if you have anything from staff to say anything on it?
No, we've provided you with the information about the process and the timeline, and so our recommendation is that we move forward.
Okay, okay. So, just so the public knows, it's, there's several, it's a fairly short document. It's, would go from approximately April through approximately June, hopefully, and I forget what the cost is for it.
Nine thousand.
Nine, about $9,000 or so. $9,000, okay. So, just so we know about what that is.
It's $9,000 for each.
For each piece. So, $19,000 total approximately for the cost to, to help us through this with, I think, four different meetings and stuff. Any other comments or questions? Yes, Commissioner, it's Jean, sorry.
Last time we were talking about possibly doing RFP, did we ever go through with that?
Oh, should I refer? Go ahead, Superintendent.
We did check, I did check with Mr. Van De Water and Mr. Novke about whether or not we were required to do the RFP, and we are not.
Okay. And it seemed that there were not many others that would meet the criteria we had anyhow, or perhaps, at least in this state. Well, it's a good question. Oftentimes, we would. Any other questions or comments? Okay, I would accept the, I think we should do a roll call vote on this. Secretary Iverson?
Commissioner Dux?
Yes.
Commissioner Jean?
Yes.
Commissioner Spindler?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummins? Commissioner Hamburg Boyle?
Yes.
Okay, we have a unanimous vote. Thank you, everyone. Let's hope, hope this helps move us forward. The next individual resolution is our five-year capital projects. This is basically us approving that portion of budget for five-year, for, for the next year, the next academic year. We had talked about the, the, these projects before they came up to us. Charlie, I don't know if you have something to contribute here before we get to our, to give a little summary of it. But we had seen these before, I think it was probably a month ago in a meeting, we talked about some of these.
Thank you, President Spindler. I don't have any new information, but I'll take any questions that anybody has.
Okay. Yes, Commissioner Dux.
I always have a question, Charlie.
Thank you.
Sorry. Does this, this year, this coming year finish the project, the HVAC at South Middle School?
Yes, thankfully. It's been four years getting that project done, and at the culmination of the project, the entire school will be air-conditioned, so that's been a good one for us.
Does it, does it bother you at all that on a couple of these bids, the highest one almost doubled, the lowest one?
It's always interesting when they come in. Sometimes there's a huge spread as different contractors look at projects in a different light, and, and some have very little variance in dollars. We always check with the low bidder to make sure that they didn't miss anything or that they're comfortable with their bid. And obviously, the ones that we've had experience with before are, you know, are pretty easy to work with along that line, but new contractors, we tend to scrutinize quite a bit closer.
Yeah, okay. Well, thank you. I, I just wonder also about asbestos. Do we still have asbestos in our buildings?
We do have a number of buildings. Anything built prior to the 1980s has asbestos in it in some form or another. We monitor that annually and do all of our inspections and remediation. The Montessori roof project actually is an asbestos project as well because there's some materials in the roof insulation there.
It just surprised me. Thank you.
Commissioner Jean.
My question is, for the contractors, the lowest ones or the ones that we do go with, if they're new, how do we check for quality?
Well, we, we pre-qualify all of our contractors that haven't worked with us before, and annually they do send us in their, their qualifications, which include bonding, work experience, equipment, and things like that, that we ask for annually. Ones that have not worked with us before, we look for references of other successful projects and a little bit on their work history so that we've got a good feeling for, you know, if they're capable of, of the scope of work that we're asking for. Yes, we are. And, and all the bids are plan and spec bids, so they're, they're bidding to our specifications, so, you know, they've, they've got to be able to perform for what we're asking for.
Commissioner Hamburg Boyle.
I always think it's an opportune time too, Charlie, to say that you are staying within a budget that is far, far to the negative that we need to keep our buildings and grounds and what they really need to be. So, I think the general public needs to know that, and we thank you for, for doing the great job that you do.
Thank you.
Yes, every should know, we have a long list of these. And with that said, I should, I should at least, at least say for the public what the projects are that we're doing. The Montessori roof, the South chilled water phase four to finish off that HVAC, North Woods remodeling phase two, North Track resurfacing, and then on here is additional architectural engineering funds for pre-referendum planning to start designing secure entrances. And I assume that's just so we can start getting an idea of how much it would cost to do some of these things if we go to referendum for that. Is that correct?
That's correct. We're looking for budget numbers, preliminary plans on the security, and then some more detailed plans on South.
Great. And the, the budget we have is 1.6 million, which is about what this is, which just doesn't come close to covering all of those that we need to, so anyhow.
There is an amount per, per square foot, right? I always make you do this, I'm sorry.
My, my ideal is a dollar per square foot or about 2.4 million that we'd have annually.
So, people can make their own comparison there.
Okay, so we have this, we need a motion on the floor to approve these five projects, I believe.
So moved.
A motion from Commissioner Dux. A second from Commissioner Jean. Any other comments or questions about this? Kind of our standard list, we had discussed it prior. Okay, could we have a roll call? Okay, could we have a roll call, uh, call vote on this, please?
Sure. Commissioner Dux?
Yes.
Commissioner John?
Yes.
Commissioner Spindler?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummins?
Yes.
Commissioner Hamburg Boyle?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Okay, um, our last resolution for tonight, uh, before we adjourn to committee, is, um, the preliminary notice of non-renewal teachers with limited term contracts. So obviously each year we have to, uh, look at non-renewals and, uh, and decide on those. Um, so, uh, do I have a motion or any comments or questions about this?
Some of them.
We have a motion from Commissioner Johnson. Do I have a second? We have a second from Commissioner John. Any questions or comments about non-renewals for teachers, um, and I, well, yes, with limited term contracts, anything? Commissioner Dux?
I just wondered about the Japanese teacher being like, oh, does that mean we're not going to teach Japanese anymore? I just wondered about that.
I don't know, um, Tim?
Uh, nope. Uh, we have a Japanese program that actually grew in, uh, grew in sections next year compared to this year, uh, but the Japanese program is not, uh, right now large enough to sustain two full-time teachers. But the course will certainly be offered.
And I try to get my daughter to take it. Any other comments or questions? Okay, um, let's have a roll call vote on this one too, please.
Commissioner Dux?
Yeah, um, yes.
Commissioner John?
Yes.
Commissioner Spindler?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummins?
Yes.
Commissioner Hamburg Boyle?
Yes.
All right, great, thank you. Okay, now we will adjourn to committee. All right. Um, we have four items and committee for discussion. The first one is, we've had several discussions on this, uh, it's the school day start times, committee charge. And, um, on this, um, let's see, I'll pull it up. We had a, a report from the Calendar Committee, if you remember about this, and they had made a couple of possible recommendations. And basically what I did and with, um, interacting with the superintendent on this is I, I just put their information basically in a charge form, um, for us to consider, um, here. And, uh, I don't know if we can put it up, I don't know if it's possible if we can put that up for the board and the public to see, um, what the charge is proposed. And then I have a couple of questions for you after you have a chance to look at it. First discussion about that, Commissioner Johnson?
Just, um, on the structure of the committee and nitpicky points, we, um, got rid of our athletic directors before I was on the board, so it's been at least six years. So, um, I think what you want to say there is a high school assistant principal, um, who has responsibility over the athletic department. We don't have athletic directors.
Okay. Yes. Okay, that makes sense, yes. Okay, okay. Other comments or questions about the charge? Um, in it, while you're looking at it, you notice, um, if you could scroll down just a little bit, um, I didn't know, and this was, this, this is where the, the Calendar Committee had several, um, proposed, a couple ideas of by when, first of all, we would want to implement this, and that's the last kind of parentheses in the year at the end of that sentence there. Uh, so I have by month, we'd get a report, a recommendation from them, and then it would be implemented by fall of whatever year. And, um, I, I don't know what the board would like on that, so I'd like some feedback on those things. I was thinking if we could get a report back from them maybe next December or January, that would be good, um, but, uh, it's kind of up to what the board thinks. And questions, would we want a preliminary report and then a follow-up report in between before it's implemented? So it could be two reports from them to get, you know, to make sure they're on track. So those are the kind of questions I have on that, so. Yes, Commissioner John?
Yes, I would like two reports just to make sure that, uh, it is still what the board wants, 'cause we've done similar stuff before and, uh, and result, uh, was not exactly what we wanted. So I think two reports would be best.
Okay, so, uh, perhaps a report with their first recommendation of what kind of plan and then a second report, more extensive, uh, after we give feedback with education plan. Okay, Commissioner Dux?
I, I would think that we'd have to wait on a decision of when to implement and the feasibility and all the costs and everything before we can decide when we'd be able to implement it. So I, I don't think we could decide tonight what, when we're going to implement it, if we, if we accept the proposal.
Sure. So you think we should probably get one or both of these reports before we would give an implementation date? Okay, okay. Other comments? Commissioner Hamburg Boyle?
Um, I just had one about the six teachers on here, um, two from each level, which I take elementary, middle, and high school. Is that the thought? Because since we serve almost nine hundred preschoolers, I would like to have some preschool representation on there.
Um, I don't have any objection, I don't, Superintendent, if you have any.
The reason that they were not included in the committee is that their start times will remain the same. They, they will not change. Um, so, but we could certainly include preschool in the committee.
Ask. I mean, I, I know that there's some research out for little ones too, so, I don't know, I don't want people to have to, um, be part of it if it's not something that's feasible, but.
We do have two childcare providers on it.
Okay.
So, uh, either way is okay. Okay. Okay, any other comments? So, uh, is, is the consensus, uh, obviously I think what Commissioner Johnson said was fine, makes sense.
I didn't say anything.
Uh, no, about the assistant principals instead. So you did. Um, having two reports and waiting to set an implementation date until we get at least one of those reports and we can easily change that wording, is that reasonable to everyone? Should I, um, I work with the superintendent to change that wording on that, would that be reasonable? Or would someone else like, if someone else wants to work on it, they're welcome to. Commissioner Johnson?
Well, since clearly I'm not going to be here when the reports get here, you can take this with a grain of salt, but, um, I guess I'd be concerned if you're not getting a report until December or January, because last fall, we thought we were going to be getting a report in January and that report didn't come, you know, until March, and then it was, we're not going to do anything for two to three years. And so, um, having recalled that I asked this to be an agenda item in the two thousand nine, two thousand ten school year, um, I would encourage you to move it along faster. So if you say, you know, realistically, I understand you're not going to implement it this September, but I think if you have in mind working backwards that you could implement it in the fall of sixteen, that you, you know, think about, when would that make sense to have that first report due? And maybe it is earlier than December so that you can, you know, launch, you know, have that second report and launch into action at some point. It just seems silly to me to ask for an agenda item and have it implemented eight years later. I, I understand it's, institutions run slowly, but, um, every year we wait, there are more high school kids who are not, um, performing at their best because they're getting up at, you know, five thirty in the morning, so.
Thank you. Uh, any other, any other feedback for, um, adjusting this, uh, either giving dates when reports should be due or, uh, or any other comments about the, um, charge there? Again, I took most of that from the, um, the only thing that was different from the Calendar Committee report was I added the financial piece, I believe, that we should think about the financial aspect. Okay, so, uh, do I, so I need a consensus, do you want it to come back as an individual resolution the next time it comes forward, or do you want to discuss it anymore? Commissioner Dux, yes, you think so?
Yes, I would suggest a resolution for the next board meeting.
Okay, others? Okay, I'll take that as a consensus for resolution next time. Okay. All right, great, thank you for looking that over and, um, I'll, uh, I'll, I'll work with the superintendent and any other administrators to get that done. Thank you. All right, let's see where we're at. Oh, any public comments on that? I'm remembering, I'm finally remembering. Yes, any kind of public comments on that? Just state your name and address and, uh, go ahead.
Joe Luganville, eight oh one TruX Boulevard. Um, I guess what I would add is just in terms of the committee makeup, possibly looking at engaging one or both of the student representatives to the board and a possible student council leader, um, from one or both of the high schools. If nothing else for the education piece, when it comes to engaging student groups in that process and their parents, I think that would be a valuable component to that.
Okay. Thank you. So, yes, John? Okay, anyone else speak? Yes, go ahead.
Because I'm here, I wanted to share that as a teenager and many people in my community, um, we had a class, it wasn't through our public school, this is in Burnsville, Minnesota, that started at six AM. And I learned more in that class than a lot of the classes I went to at school. And my only reason for saying that was because I was vested. So though I do think start times are an important thing to consider, I think the vesting interest of our students is maybe a bigger deal. That's my personal opinion, thank you.
Great, thank you, thank you. Okay, great. So now we have our policy one eighty-three on voting, discussion of possible first reading of one eighty-three. Um, you notice the only change is to change the word present to voting. Okay, of all members of the board present, well, at the meeting would become, of all members voting at the meeting, that, that would be the denominator, it would be taken out of. Um, there's a reason for this, is that, um, when we have too many, when we have people abstain, the question is, do they count as a no vote? Or do they count as just not in the total at all? And if you think about conflict interest laws, state statutes, they should not count as a no vote, that would be against state statute, because otherwise they're having an influence on the outcome of the vote. So it makes no sense in that sense, or even against statute, to include them as a no or a yes vote in that, so. Um, so hence the reason to make our policy more consistent with that idea. Um, so, uh, that's the rationale behind it. Do I have a motion to approve this or any discussion on it? Oh, no, I'm sorry, we're not, we don't, we're in committee session, but do we have a discussion on it? Uh, Commissioner Johnson?
Well, since it's my fault for putting you in this conundrum last meeting, I'll volunteer to read it.
I will take you up on that. Uh, before you do, any other questions or discussion about it? Okay, oh, go ahead, thank you.
Voting, one eighty-three. The Board of Education may, at any meeting thereof, carry, pass, or adopt any motion or resolution coming before said board by a majority vote of all members of the board voting at the meeting, except as otherwise required by law or board policy. In voting upon matters involving the expenditure of money or upon demand of any member, voting shall be by roll call vote and the vote recorded by the secretary. Board members will be listed alphabetically at the organizational meeting. A rotating system will be used in voting, starting with the first name on the list at the first meeting, with the board members dropping to the bottom of the list for the next regular meeting and this process continuing during the year.
Great, thank you. Um, without assuming no objection, we'll go on to this for resolution next time. Okay, all right. Great, good. So now, uh, probably the two biggest of our night, we have our charter school contracts here, um, to discuss. So we have the McKinley, McKinley Charter School Contract and the Chippewa Valley Montessori Charter School Contract, and they're both extensions. Before we go, I asked, um, since we now have this charter committee, um, and that helped work through some of how to at least do a template for these, I asked Commissioner Hamburg Boyle to just kind of describe the process we've gone through with the charter schools and how that's worked out for us, and then we'll have, discuss these contracts. So, go ahead.
Is that amenable with everyone? Okay.
Oh, I did forget, is there any public comment on the policy one eighty-three? I kind of, but if there is. Okay, all right, I had to check. Go ahead, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Um, I just wanted to bring everybody up to speed again on the charge of the committee. Um, the charge of the committee is to provide guidance and recommendations to the school board relating to its role as authorizer of current and future Oak Clare School District charter choice schools. This will encourage innovation that could increase our ability to provide diverse programming and methodologies. Through this investigation and advisement, the committee can support the increase in student readiness for and success in the Oak Clare School District's programming and post-secondary options. So I wanted to let people kind of know who's on the committee quickly, um, so that you kind of see the spread of, um, uh, you know, where they're, where they're coming from. So we had Derek Black, a secondary teacher representing, um, high school. Doug Dearmeyer was a McKinley charter teacher, 'cause we wanted them represented as well. Um, myself and Charles Boo were on the committee as part of the board. Melissa Greer was the elementary teacher. Mike Coles, McKinley Governance Board Member, I think I saw him here tonight. Tracy Bush, she was our Chippewa Valley Montessori Charter School Governance Board Member. Pam Hermanson was a Chippewa Valley Montessori teacher. Tim Liepam was our district administrator, and then Todd Johnson, principal at Montessori, and Pete Riley, principal at McKinley, were the facilitators. So, um, the committee, your committee chose to take the opportunity initially to connect and inform the committee members about our present public school instrumentality charter school. So it was kind of in the beginning getting to know each other. I don't think we pulled, um, our charters together like that before. Um, so that was, um, a way of getting to know each other. And initially, Rich Spindler gave me, um, the Wisconsin DPI Charter School Contract Reviewer Benchmark. So initially, we thought as a committee, it made sense to us to use these benchmarks and deeply look at both Montessori and McKinley's contracts, um, which taught us all a lot. The committee felt that we could use the benchmarks to make our own district charter school contract template as a way to make future district charter contracts more consistent for board review. So this process allowed deep discussion on what is put into contracts and what charter governance boards would possibly place into their own individual policies. So what goes into a contract and what would be their policy? We had lots of conversations about that, which was good for me since I'm on policy and I was kind of on. Other charter school contracts were looked at as well, Tracy pulled those in. Um, I do think that both our charter schools will refer to this, um, process tonight as well, as part of what, um, um, when they talk about their contracts. But for me personally, as one of the board members on the committee, I appreciated participating in the increased understanding and collaboration that took place between our instrumentality public charter schools and the educators that were not from the charters. That was really fun, um, for them to get to know about their charter schools in the district as well. Um, as I reflected, putting the report together to, to give to you tonight, um, it might prove beneficial to represent the pre-K level too on our committee. Um, we are embarking on a very special journey here for our district, and I guess I wanted to specifically thank Trish Cummins, um, for her vision, and Diana Ziegler is also for working on the charge of this committee at its inception. And other thank yous to Tim's leadership, um, Todd and Pete's facilitation and leadership, dear Sandy LaValle's detailed minutes that she does for every meeting and reminding us to be there. And I think we're off to a good start, so that's my report.
Awesome, great, thank you. I thought it was useful for them to see how the, the committee is working for us. So let's go to the first one, which is the McKinley Charter School Contract. What I thought we could do, if it's okay with board members, just kind of go page by page through it and see if you have any questions or comments about any of it. Otherwise, I, I don't have any, um, any other real, uh, process to go through except for that. So we can just go through page by page on this. Well, I don't know, does anyone have any concerns about McKinley, uh, contract at all? Any questions? And both, uh, principals are here, by the way, with questions, if, if you have any. Actually, I had one for Pete about the McKinley, if I could ask you one, since no one seems...
Can we do that, just ask questions?
Sure, sure, we could do that, yeah, I'm, I'm all for saving time rather than going through it, but. Pete, I, I noticed on, um, on nine, it talked about racial, ethnic balance, and what really that made me think about, I didn't, one thing that might clarify something for me was, how do you actually admit students? I mean, how do you know who gets in? I mean, how, do they apply? Do you find them, or how, how does it work?
On-site, the components on-site, competency and credit, they're all referred from the, from their homeschool, middle school or high school.
They are, okay.
Unless they're eighteen or older and they're moving into town and they come to us for educational options and we say, okay, we'll get your transcript and you have four credits, then we just bring them into the front door.
Yeah, okay. Okay, all right, that clears it up, thanks. Anything? Commissioner John?
My, my question is for Todd.
My question is for Todd. Could we switch?
Yes, go ahead.
Could we switch schools?
Oh, no, let's stick with McKinley first, excuse me.
Sorry.
I was distracted by... Any other questions or comments about the McKinley contract? I like the way it's streamlined, and they're kind of similar, the kind of template idea. I think that's good. Okay, so does that mean, should I take this as a consensus that we would go to resolution with McKinley contract next time? Commissioner Cummins.
I just don't want to miss the opportunity, which we usually, somebody from the board brings up every time you come before us, that we're very grateful and that you do work that a lot of people in this community have no idea is A, going on, B, who's doing it, and C, how successful you are. So we appreciate your work.
Thanks a lot, and I want to give a shout-out to Adrian Booter, student of mine, that came through and just overcame a lot of obstacles. He finished earlier in the year, and he's been accepted early into tech, and he's been biking every day, and he's doing B-average, or B-average work in his classes, and it's just a great story, so, but thank you.
And I would encourage anyone who wants to do a tour, do it. I did it recently, it was good to see. Okay, so we'll assume it'll go to resolution next time. Thank you, appreciate it. Okay, so let's move on to Montessori contract. Do you, again, does the board just want to ask questions, or do you want to go through it individually? Okay, so questions about this, I may have several. Commissioner John?
Okay, my question is for number 23, transportation. Have the Oaklary School District been providing for 4K through fifth, as far as transportation?
Currently, right now, we're not offering transportation home for the 4K kiddos that dismiss at 11:20.
Okay, yeah, because I see that you referred it to policy 751, and so my question is, are these kids within that two-mile radius?
Most of them would not be in that two-mile radius, they'd be outside of that.
Yeah, and my concern with this is because I know you're working on your diversity efforts, but if we approve this, and we take in more of these, these child from further away, that means that their siblings are going to have an advantage of getting in as well, correct?
Could you repeat that?
The, I forgot what the program is, I should have wrote it down, where...
Are you talking about open enrollment?
I'm talking about sibling preferences.
Sibling priority, sure.
Yes. So if we allow more of these, of the kids from outside of the two-mile radius to come in, will their siblings be able to come in as well, being preferred?
That is correct.
So are we going to keep this cycle going? If we keep this cycle going, we will never get the kids around the area to come. That is my thinking behind this.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Do we have a cost estimate on adding the 4K busing?
Yes. I contacted Mr. Fag today, and each route could cost as much as $114 per day. If Montessori requires two dedicated buses, it would cost $228 per day, per route.
Okay, so we don't know how many routes, but, so the 4K kids can't ride the K-5 bus?
Well, currently, what happens is that if the 4K students have a sibling in K through five that rides the bus, the student can ride in to school with their sibling. If they're, but there's not a route at midday to ride home, someone has to pick them up. And the district has had kind of a longstanding practice that students who are in need of transportation for 4K programs go to Prairie Ridge, if transportation is an issue.
So if, so we're anticipating, so if they don't have a sibling, they can't get a ride?
That is correct.
So we don't know how many kids or how many routes it would cost this year, let's say, to send the 4K kids?
No, we'd have to have the addresses of the students who are entering at that level, and then student transit would have to figure out what those routes are.
So we're only, I get it, okay, so we're only running, we're not going all over the city, we're only going to the kids that are in K-5, and so if they live near somebody who's in K-5, it's not going to add a route, but if they're someplace else, it might add a route, or add a stop, or...
And one of the things that student transit told us is that depending on the start time of the school, there might be some flexibility that they could tie in with existing service to Prairie Ridge, or St. Mark's, or Messiah. But those are all logistics that would have to be worked out.
So we couldn't give them the addresses of the current kids and get an estimate on what it would be next year, or...
We'd have to have the, you'd have to have the addresses of the students who are enrolling in 4K next year, and we don't have that yet.
When will you have that, Todd?
We should have that at the start of May, that it changes a little bit from the start, you know, from May until the start of the school year, just due to families leaving and enrolling new students.
Do we have a deadline for renewing this contract?
Yes, we do.
What?
We'd like to do it much sooner, obviously.
Right, but I'm thinking that you might want actual numbers on what the cost would be to add this transportation, at least for the first year, to decide whether you're willing to put in on the contract.
Yeah, that was, that was my concern also.
The other variables are, you know, if we're going to be able to tap into those other bus routes from the three other, you know, schools that, you know, Dr. Hardbeck mentioned.
Well, I have no doubt that GFI is going to do the most cost-efficient thing for us, but I think that whether it's using this year's kids as a, you know, using this year's 4K as a, you know, maybe even doing both, as an estimate, or waiting till May 1st to get some, you know, kind of preliminary numbers, that it would be, doing due diligence to have an actual number to say, yes, that's worth it, or, boy, that's something we can't afford.
Well, and he did give us a preliminary number in terms of the cost for the route, you know, for the two routes, to and from the school. Now whether those routes could be, the route to school could be incorporated with other routes that are already in existence, there would have to be a special route, kind of home from, from the program.
Commissioner Duhax.
And this is, this is very impactful on your enrollment and the way your classes are set up, correct?
It certainly can be.
Yeah. Well, it seems like we need to try to get the addresses of those kids, so we can see if this will work or not.
Yeah, and I would like to point out, you know, the policy 751 has been cited for this, but this policy came in in 1996, when we didn't have 4K. So it really applied to secondary and elementary, so we really don't have a policy on this. And I would note that we don't provide, you know, we provide busing to Prairie Ridge to certain students, but not to everyone in every childcare that we're involved with, nor do we provide busing toward, for example, those in the competency program of McKinley, for example. So I'm not sure, saying the policy is enough to convince me that we should do it, I think we should do it if we think it's right and we can afford it, and I can't, I can't answer that latter question, no. So my preference would probably be not have it in, move it forward with the contract, see if we can get an estimate for this, and then we can modify the contract or just provide it when we think we have it and we're ready for it. That's kind of my feeling. Other comments or questions about this? Commissioner Hamburg Boyle?
Well, I just say this again, too, we can't plan because of the budget we do have, and we don't even know what it is at this point in time. So that makes it hard for any district to make some of these decisions, and I just wanted to say that.
I feel the need is, just to say that the governance board did consider, you know, the difficulty with the school budget going into next year, and we did talk about that, and we're, you know, we recognize that. We still felt we should put it in the budget, at least for a discussion point. Typically, now we have 32 4K kiddos, and typically, at Montessori, half the students are transported by their parents. Now, there's no way to guarantee that that's what it would be next year, but that is the trend for the last couple of years. But we did, at length, talk about, this is, we realize this is a burden on the district, and there are difficult times ahead of us, so we do understand that.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and I feel the, in the other direction also, because I think it would be right there.
Well, they are our kiddos, and we feel like we have to advocate for our kids.
Yeah. So anyhow, that's, that's my feeling on it. In the end, what we need to do here is provide kind of a summary of feedback back to the charter school of what changes we might like to see, so I'm hoping you're thinking about these, of what we might summarize at the end here, or to the charter committee, if they want to go to the charter committee with it. But that's, that was my thought there, I don't know if the other board members feel that way, is see if we, I would prefer not to see it in there for now, and then see if we can commit the money later, when we get our more budget. So that's how I'm feeling about that. I have other topics I'm interested in. Commissioner Duhax? Oh, I saw you reaching out, sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay, all right. I had a couple of things on here, I'll just take one, for example. Under the autonomy part, section number 11, if you go to 11, I don't remember what page it is, page five, number 11. The school calendar, it said autonomy in school calendar, that concerned me a little bit, if only if, because of busing. If they have a different calendar, how do we work out busing, for example? And I don't know, Superintendent Hardbeck, if you have any questions or comments, or Tim, about them being able to change their calendar, I'm not sure if there's problems with coordination that way. So, do we, should we be concerned about that?
Some days, with the calendars being similar right now, Montessori has used some days for professional development or non-direct instruction days, when other schools did. So there, the busing schedule would not necessarily be altered, some students simply wouldn't ride on those days. If the calendar were altered where routes would need to be run on days that the regular classes, the regular schools were not in session, that certainly would increase costs for student transit, because no matter what they doubled up on would be, would be eliminated.
So that would be a concern of mine, with costs right there.
So that, the intent of that is to bring in innovative ideas, and not necessarily to have school on days that the Oaklary School District doesn't have in school. Matter of fact, that stuff, that wasn't, I guess, the underlying point of putting that in there. We get that we can't be asking for those extra days and cost the school district, or put a school district in a financial, you know, where you're having to pay out more money just for our program. And that's why we put at the end of our contract that we're operating in good faith, and that we're negotiating this in good faith. And it's just to allow us a little bit of freedom, working within the confines of, you know, we don't want to have to cost the school district anymore for food and nutrition program, or for transportation, it's just to allow us a little freedom in case we come up with a innovative idea that we want to bring forth and try at our school.
And I think that's great, so, but, go ahead.
Maybe we could put a clause in there saying, "subject to approval," or "subject to discussion."
I don't know, what do you think of that? Board members?
Or with no, with no conflicts, with a regular calendar.
Say that again, I didn't understand, go ahead.
Well, with, with consideration for the regular school calendar.
Commissioner Cummins?
We're on, I'm trying to say this in a positive way. The whole point of a charter is autonomy, and we have, we are very limited on the autonomy we give. I just hate to see us, where we can give more autonomy, I think we should, and let it work itself out. I mean, that's the point, is that it's, it's one of our research and development schools, and so we're always trying to hold it in alignment. And there's never been a, I mean, I just, I don't, I don't foresee a time when they're going to do something that completely throws everything up in the air, but I think we need to give that. I'm also thinking ahead, that if we ever wanted to have a choice school, that was a year-round school, again, we need to build in that autonomy. And so I would err on the side of when we can give freedom, to give it.
Commissioner Hamburg Boyle?
I think my experience, too, on the committee, was that our charters have a sense of that now, whereas before they didn't, and I think that's important.
Okay, other comments or questions about contract pieces? Commissioner Duhax?
Well, maybe you'd like to comment on the five-year contract length, I think that's a little long myself. I was thinking more in terms of maybe three years, and no automatic renewal.
Should I let you comment, or should I let, you want to go ahead?
Yeah, the idea behind that, again, is that we looked at several contracts across the state, and there seem to be more of the normal length of time, as opposed to, you know, making it shorter. And that's why the wording, we try to word it in such a way that if there are changes that need to be made, it can be brought up by either side at any time. And so it's a fluid contract, and it doesn't mean we can't come back to the table next year, or the year after, or that we have to wait five years. This is a partnership, and we're looking for the most flexible way that we can grow the program, as, when you view it as being an innovative school. And we feel that if we allow for either side to want to change something or bring something up, that that gives us a freedom to do that.
Thank you. Commissioner Hamburg Boyle?
How long, Ted, how long has Montessori been in existence now?
I believe it's 2002, so 13 years.
So there's a track record there, too?
Yeah, 13 years. I didn't want to say the number 13.
Commissioner Cummins?
Besides, the length of the school isn't as much as an indicator for me as the work of the current governance board, in terms of moving into a five-year contract, and just being very impressed with where they're taking it, so my comfort is with a five-year.
Okay. I did have the same question as Commissioner Duhax. I don't know, I've kind of gone back and forth, and one thing is, you know, a board can be totally different in a few years, which might make a difference, but in a way, that might be good, that they have some stability. One thing I had thought of, if the board wasn't comfortable with five years, is, like, I think McKinley's contract has the auto-renewal clause in it, I believe, and that would be another possibility, just have an auto-renewal clause, if we don't, if we don't request to do anything different, it just auto-renews. That would be another possibility, if the board was interested, so.
Well, I could get comfortable with that, since we have a charter school committee that's kind of overseeing, am I, am I perceiving that right? And it could be more fluid, but I would expect that there would be some coming back occasionally, at least to the committee, and I'd like to have some reassurance, I think, in that, that it would be run through that committee, not necessarily to us as the board, but some kind of a report.
We get the annual report, too.
Yes, we do, we do get that.
We placed in there for the annual report that, not a specific date, but that any time the board asks for a report, that, then I would give a report to the school board.
You're okay with the five-year? Okay, all right.
As long as we have some checks involved.
Okay, okay. I had another on here, number 17, a little concerned about one piece of the language, talked about relocating. A little concerned about one piece of the language, talked about relocating. And it said, where did it say? I got to find it, number 17. If it, in event charter school anticipates relocating, shall notify the board in writing, but it doesn't say it needs approval from the board if it wants to relocate. Now, the board, you know, manages the facilities and so forth, and so I wonder, does the board want to actually approve it? I would not expect them to do that, I mean, but it doesn't say that we actually need to approve it, so is that a concern for the board?
No, I mean, and, you know, I'm thinking of Appleton is an example that has, you know, quite a few charters that are, some are in district buildings, some are renting space downtown, and it's just kind of, it can be fluid, but we are required to provide, I mean, that, it's not like they're going to go out and sign a lease without us, and I think that first sentence takes care of that. But if something were to come up, and they found a space, or let's say we had a, you know, sustainable farming middle school, and they were looking at farming space or something like that, it's, again, just building in that flexibility that the charter goes with the program, and the program can outgrow space, or...
Okay, so Superintendent, are you, I assume you're comfortable with the language as it is, or...
Well, part of the contract is that the district shall inspect the charter school facilities, and that at a frequency determined by the district. I mean, I think that if there were any changes to the school building, you know, that would have to come in agreement with the school district and the oversight. And maybe that could be more clearly specified in the contract.
Okay, so if we could clarify that? Okay, all right, I'm comfortable with that, then. Other than that, I didn't have much, did anyone else have anything else on the contract? Okay, so to summarize, what we had was a question about the busing cost, perhaps remove that until we figure out the budget cost for that. I had, it seemed like consensus of keeping it at five-years contract, and a consensus of keeping the wording as it was for the school calendar. I don't know, Secretary Iverson, if I've missed anything on the major topics we talked about or not? Hopefully, I have not. That's what I have on my sheet. School calendar, we talked a little about, 4K busing, which seemed like the one thing we might would like to change, and the five-year contract, and the school calendar. Those are the things that I had, as discussed. Okay. So if the charter school, Montessori would look at the contract and think about if they'd want to change that about busing, we could actually go to resolution soon if the board was comfortable with that next time, or we could bring it to committee again. Any ideas? Wait, see what charter school comes back on that, because really just that one question about busing, it seems. Okay, so perhaps resolution next time? Okay, okay. Great, thank you. So I have any comments from either, for either charter school, McKinley, or Montessori? Do we have any public comments on this, on the charter school contracts? Wow. Everyone wants to go watch the game. You know what I was going to say, I was going to require you to give me the score if we went over time.
Motion to adjourn.
Well, before you do that, no, I can't accept a motion yet. Do I have requests for future agenda items? Do we have any? Okay, now I will take a motion.
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second.
I was going to ask...
All those in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Aye? Oppose? Yes. Thank you, everybody.
This program was recorded and presented by Chippewa Valley Community Television. Chippewa Valley Community Television is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, you can contact us by calling 715-839-5067, or on the web at www.cbcTV.org.